Those positions, those are not positions within the teacher's contract. So this has just been a recurring topic of having good candidates and having other towns paying two or three dollars more an hour and losing good candidates. So I'm gonna turn it over to Russ.
Sure, so as I mentioned, I think at the beginning of this year, we talked about substitute pay. With the help of the SAU staff, we did a comparison of our, if you would, competition, our books that we brought, so what we found was that we were grossly underpaying compared to everybody else that was out there. So based upon a seven point five hour day, folks for Sunapee were getting seventy dollars a day while the Frackland lot they were getting close to ninety six dollars a day, Grantham ninety dollars a day, Kearsarge ninety seven, Levin in ninety, Skoma up to one hundred and three, and Newport was at seventy. And so, based upon that, I'm gonna raise the subpay to eighty-five dollars a day. We have a sub line in our budget. It's approximately sixty thousand dollars. That covers, that sixty thousand dollars could cover approximately eight hundred and sixty days of staff being out. Typically, we are in the range between a six hundred and nine hundred days of needing substitutes. And so for now, we're gonna leave that line at sixty thousand dollars and see how we sort of make out. Looking forward to next year, if we needed to, potentially we have some savings based upon things that are going on with the budget, and we can talk about that during budget season.
Yeah.
So my, what I'm informing you tonight is that I am gonna change the rate of subpay to eighty-five dollars a day. And there's, again, you have all that information in your packet. Again, with the help of the SAU personnel, we had to take a look at parent professionals, and really this came to light in the last three weeks. We had a need of two or three parent professionals, we had advertised, advertised, advertised from the summer moving forward. We finally had some folks come in the door, and they came in the door and said, "What do you start at?" And our starting pay at that point in time for parent professional, parent one, is eleven dollars and fifty cents. And they said, "Well, I can't afford to leave my job in X because they're paying me fourteen, they're paying me thirteen, they're paying me sixteen, depending where they are." So after a little bit of frustration through some folks, we sat down, again, we did a comparison of our competition, we looked at parent ones and parent twos across the board, you have those analyses in there. And what we came up with is looking at a range, and so to allow some flexibility to bring on people within a range. And so our starting range for parent one is going to go up to twelve dollars and seventy-six cents. Twelve dollars and seventy-six cents is, let me just take a look at this, other than one other school district, it's below everybody else's step one. So we felt at least we're starting, at our starting point now, kind of where everybody else is, or at least close to that, where before we were close to almost a dollar below that. So we're gonna have, I proposed to you there, we're gonna present this range of parent one, parent two, with a college degree, without a college degree. And what that does is it really allows us now to be competitive with our other neighboring student base.
Yeah.
And if you have questions on any of the things that's there, please don't hesitate to ask.
How do you get substitutes? Is it word of mouth? Do you advertise? Where do they come from?
So, we have a small pool, and what I mean by that is folks who routinely have enrolled in subs, whether they're teachers who have retired, parents of students, potentially, we actually have some returning graduates that come back sometimes and do some subbing for us. When we're running low, we would throw an ad out. You don't get a whole lot, most of the time it's by word of mouth, someone will say, "Hey, I know the schools are getting the subs," or, you know, "Have you thought about being a substitute teacher?" And so that's generally how that works. What we are, what we do, what we were finding, unfortunately with our subs, we would go to call them, and they would say, "I would like to, but I'm already going to X, and I'm not gonna give up X to come here for Y." So just, again, trying to be competitive, without being at the top of the scale, but being competitive.
How many hours a week do the subs typically get paid for?
So they work about a seven point five hour day.
Seven point five.
And so it depends on how many days that they would be called in to sub. And they may not be in for that one person, they could commit for multiple different people. All right, the last piece, and again, with the work from the folks at the SAU, we did a comparison of custodians, and then based upon that comparison, very similarly, we found out that we were at the very low end at our starting range at eleven dollars and twenty-five cents. The, our folks around us, I thought it was at thirteen thirty-five, Grantham at fourteen eighty-three, Kearsarge at eleven, we're then a quick jump to thirteen thirty-five, Levin at fourteen, Skoma fourteen, Newport thirteen. So based upon that, again, and where this came to light, Matt has been looking for some, a subs, excuse me, a full-time custodian, he was looking for one over the summertime, he had some summer help. He had three or four people, again, that came in, they had some great experience, and when he said, "I have to start you here," there was no way that they could accept the position. It was just too low. So what we've done here is very similarly, we created a range. And so between zero and three years' experience, now Matt has a little bit more of a range to hire people, and we range from zero to three, four to six, seven to ten, and eleven plus. Just to note, I didn't note on the parents, but I'll note it here, so that range is where we start you, anything moving forward that you receive is based upon your performance. So there's no guarantee three percent, two percent, one percent, there's no guaranteed step. It is completely based on your performance. And so there are times that we may give a three percent raise up, and there are times that we may give a one and a half percent raise up. And again, it's all based upon evaluation and performance. So that's what I'm bringing forward to for information, so that you have that. We have this obviously covered with where we are right now, we're not, there's no rule of budgetary changes. We, again, we can talk more about budget when we get into budget season about how those things may reflect moving forward.
Yeah, and just so people understand where, you know, when it comes to teacher's contract and those negotiations underway, that's one, that's a board responsibility, we have a couple of us on there that do that. When it comes to these other positions outside of that contract, that's a superintendent responsibility, and so it becomes an informational, an action item. So, any questions among the board on the difference, just so the public understands there's a difference, I just thought it'd be helpful to follow that out, so everybody understood that, so we don't want any confusion with that. But it's a reality that lots of businesses are facing as well. We are, where I work, where there's a much more, you have to be more proactive in looking at starting wages, because people may want to come to, you know, to a good company, but somebody's always offering a little more money right now. There's such a problem with the labor pool. If you're not feeling it yet, or hearing about it yet, you will absolutely be hearing about it within a very short period. There's a real threat to the New England economy for the lack of young people, the lack of folks, lack of workers, busy companies. I know in some in Newport, but certainly where I work, at Hypotherm up in Lebanon, Fuji, Dartmouth College, there's hundreds of openings between just a few companies. Good paying, quality jobs, and we can't find enough people to fill them. So you'll, you'll hear more of this kind of strain, even down to small, family-owned businesses trying to compete with enough of a wage to be competitive for a shrinking labor pool. But I'm glad that we're addressing it in a proactive, but still fiscally careful way. SES facility committee update. So we have been very active, we've had a lot going on. I think outside of this meeting, there's four meetings related to it this week alone. Jim and I are gearing up for a living room tour, so if anybody listening or watching wants to invite us to talk to a group of taxpayers and curious citizens who are visiting the senior home, the library, we were at the Riverway, we met with the chief, road agent, planning board, had a great discussion with the planning board, they were great, CIP. So I'm making the point, there's more of it, I'm not trying to list every single one, but we've been active and will remain active. Here's a short of it for everyone to get to, and I, I am electing to just be this direct because it's my responsibility as a board member, and for Jim and I, the subcommittee members, we need to be able to provide for the quality education and the, and the learning environment of our students. We have a ninety-year-old elementary school, there's been a conversation in town for twenty years about modernizing it and expanding it. It last failed in two thousand and six by less than a hundred and fifty olds. So what does that mean now? Ten million, seventy thousand dollar bond failed. There was thirty percent building aid, so it would have cost us seven million dollars. Basically, the same exact project with no building aid, and there hasn't been for years, though we're still doing the steps to apply for it if it falls out of the sky. Building costs go double every ten years. That's what we're looking at in town. So, as we were afraid of, the ten million dollar project is twenty-six million dollars. But there's a worse part, a harder message for us to bring to the taxpayers, and in order for us to use our ninety-year-old building for the next ten years, we are looking between five and ten million dollars to invest just to use it for the next decade, without addressing, now I think we're over nine pages of noncompliance, ADA, homeland, safety insecurity, Department of Education.
NFPA.
NFPA. So we are, the community is at the end of its window of when we can have the school thriving learning environment, very successful, but the building itself that we are charged with supplying has not been addressed, it needs to be addressed. And so we're looking at twenty-six million dollars, which is the least of the three options we pursue, or five to ten million dollars over the next ten years, just to keep it without addressing the major faults with it, and to double lines in the parking lot that were put in years ago, and for temporary, and are now, also need to be replaced for safety and quality of education. So your new board is in quite a challenge, there's no, there's no sunshine and bunnying rabbits I can put into this message at all. This is brutal, this is expensive, but is it also critical? We are running out of time to use the building. There are examples of schools not that far away where they're warned, they're warned, they didn't address it. Both schools got shut down, they had to build two new schools. So for us to have education in Sunapee, which many of us moved here for, are very positive, passionate about, thinking about the fire trucks, I live in Dowd Lane, Orchard Heights, and you can hear when a goal scores, people go nuts in the playoffs. I got home in time, I wasn't able to go to the game, unfortunately, but you could just hear that first fire truck, and you knew it was coming up Central Street. All that is gonna have to go away if we cannot provide a building to educate our children safely. The most logical option for the board, if we aren't willing to address it, is that we would have to take this building, which is functioning very well as a middle high school, it'd be about three million dollars to modify this to meet standards, to become an elementary middle school, and our high school kids would be going out to Kearsarge or Newport or somewhere else. So I just understand, I have to take dare out of the room with this fact-based statement, this is what we're dealing with. So the committee is trying to navigate to the best understanding within the community that either way we go is gonna be expensive for all of us taxpayers, us included. So that's sort of the summary of a lot of hours and a lot of activity. We have a very busy several months leading up to March, and anywhere, anyone possible that wants to get us in front of an audience to extend understanding, we're not expecting to be a lot of enthusiasm, but if people can understand the predicament our community is in keeping education here, we would love to have that audience. We've talked to hundreds of people, we're gonna talk to hundreds of more. So if we can leverage and good faith in our tight community, your network, we would love that, those opportunities. What else? I got a roll there, I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
Talk to Mike, do you wanna?
No, you're, you're fine. As I always say, I'm glad to be part of this, it's challenging, but you know, it needs to be done, and I don't, I don't mind giving my time up to do it and work with Jesse on this, and for the talent, for the kids. And we're as transparent as we can be, our meetings were always open, and yeah, we just, we wanna get the word out, and we're always, we're always looking to move forward. Thank you, Jesse.
Thanks. So we're gonna have a open house on December sixth for anybody that wants to come, we've had several people who are here tonight at several subcommittee meetings, we really appreciate that investment. Some people don't wanna come to a formal meeting, and the folks that have been coming, we don't wanna repeat the same exact things, although some of you just got a summary you got the other night. So what we wanna do is we're gonna have an open house, which is informal, you get a packet, that'll be about cost, you know, the numbers of students, all of that, the whole packet that we're working on, we have a bunch of updated numbers. We're gonna share as much detail as we can, we're getting close on the ten-year plan for the building, if we aren't gonna, if we aren't gonna be doing the major modernization and expansion, just the short-term, multi-million dollar steps we have to take to keep it open, we're gonna share as much of that as we can by that point. So there'll be packets, it'll be informal, there won't be a meeting in this setup, so people can just ask Jim and I questions, Russ and Kelly and the other subcommittee, see the building, but please, you know, talk to people about it, have them bring their friends, and again, totally informal setting, so.
Yeah, we wanna provide information, the more, the more questions, the more answers that we, that we provide, that's, that's what we wanna do.
And it's very helpful for folks who have not seen the building, or the preschool area with the heating, the hot vents along the floor, teaching under the stairwells, and a bathroom, the handicap bathroom and a closet on the third floor, lack of easy access. So there, there's, the, the building is safe, the students are thriving, but our ability to meet code and approval to use the building is shrinking rapidly. So, do you, I'm gonna break stride here and see if there's public questions about what I just said, just in the spirit of engagement, if there are questions.
What time would that be?
Uh, I think we're gonna start at six?
Six, five-thirty.
Five-thirty. Try to, try to do those early, those meetings, some people give us a hard time for the early meetings, but if there, people are asked on their way home if they can catch it after their kids are home and those things, so.
I think so.
Five-thirty to seven-thirty, on December sixth at the SES. And then we'll have, you know, small group tours, informal setting if you ask questions. Did you have your hand?
So what I was gonna say, you know, you guys have that packet, if everybody has the packet, shared, you know, have, show, you know, where it falls, fails compliance, would it be nice, is to see what kind of improvements you guys can bring to the school, and what had a better experience everybody, so the town knows what they can look forward to, rather than harping on the bad points, kinda focus on the future and where it's gonna be brighter for everybody, show where this school can go in the future. So, I mean, I understand the guidelines you guys don't need, but maybe show the town what we have to look forward to.
That's great.
Yeah.
I appreciate the feedback. That's a lot more fun to talk about. We're trying to make sure that people understand the pressure, and maybe, maybe we've done too much of that, so I appreciate the notes.
The pressure is, you know, it's basically this for shutdown, the negatives there, right? And people are nervous, but show them what to look forward to, like, what could be better about the community?
Yeah. Yeah, thank you for that, because that's perfect, and that's just the kind of feedback, and we don't have all the answers to everything. I, I work in team-based, I, I like that, and your, your feedback is fantastic. It's nice, and it's nice to hear something refreshing and positive, so thank you.
Well, you know, you have a town of, of people that is an older town, right? You have people that don't wanna change, right? They don't wanna see the school away or something added to it. You gotta show them that it can be better, that our students can have a better experience and have a brighter future. Show them what you're adding, the programs, the facilities, the buildings, let them know.
Great, thanks, thank you very much, appreciate it. Other, other comments or questions that can help you with? Jan?
I still have a concern about the declining enrollment, and at several of the meetings you mentioned that NASDAQ provided you with that survey for declining enrollment, and what you said is that Sunapee was not going to be declining, but I, and I think one of the parts of the formula was housing starts. And I think one of the things that they did not take into consideration is housing starts in Sunapee are second homes. And so that's not a valid indicator then, because it is, if it's depending on housing starts, and, and they're second homes, they're not bringing in children into, into the community. So I, I don't think it's, it's a valid, valid study that tells the honest truth about the declining of enrollment and how that will affect taking on a project like this.
Yeah, and we can talk more, if you wanna come to the open house, and we can talk more about that, we're gonna provide some more information about enrollment, that we have to go by that as a, because that's who we have to use. There's other factors, we can share some of the other history, but this isn't, it's not the right venue for that, but I'm more than happy to talk about that, because there is a, just to touch on enrollment for every, there is a real problem in New England with declining student population in general. And so the reference that Jan made to NASDAQ, and then I've talked about, the school boards in New England have to go by these projections that involve, by this service, would then involve realtors, census, headcount, all these other factors. And so we can talk about that more on December sixth, because we'll have, we'll bring some additional information to make sure this is the facts that we have, we can provide, whether you're thrilled with the perspective of that tool that we need to use or not, we can, we can discuss that more at that time, but we'll be able to provide more, more insight. Because when you look at what, what's happening with our school population, we're up, I don't remember how many kids, how many kids this year, six?
Six, eight, I'm sure you were down a couple, Sean, you were up.
So.
Yeah, it's interesting, I just, I'll speak to this for a second, it's interesting to hear a couple of people continue to speak about declining enrollment. I don't think they look at the numbers in the last eight or ten years, because, you know, the last eight or ten years have been, have been very consistent, they may be up a little bit, so there's a difference between, now, I, I think a fair word is steady enrollment, but I think to call it declining enrollment, just basically would be, you had a hundred and forty a couple of years ago, and you have a hundred and forty-five now, it's steady enrollment.
Yeah, so we, we wanna just lay that out a little more effectively, and then people can have their own, you, you can have your own opinions on it from there, but we, we realize it'll be helpful to have a few more layers of fact to that, so we can have a fair conversation about it. So absolutely, so December sixth, along with everything else, we're gonna have the numbers, we'll have more for the, so we do wanna address that, because if you look back many years, the projection, looking out from NASDAQ, you look back many years, it is very steady, and there was a spike where we had larger, larger classes, but we'll get into more of that then, and we'll give you more, you can take away in the packet. One of the things the committee learned the hard way, which we could do differently, is we had this PowerPoint at the initial meeting, and we talked about it, but not all of the slides had explanations on them for, you know, draft at this time, context or otherwise. So we'll make sure when we give you the packet on the sixth that all of that's refreshed. Please?
Heidi Curry, I just was wondering, I know about, I think probably ten years ago, a survey went out, just general, like, town growth, what you wanna see in a town, you know, just, not a school, but just everything, you know, apartment buildings or just growth. And I didn't know if a similar survey had been on a school level, I had seen one about how parents and what residents feel about sending their kids to a regional school.
Yeah, and that's.
You know, I, we, you have to look at all angles and why the town has consistently voted these things down the last several tries. Why?
Yeah, we're hearing very pointedly from some that we, we understand this has to be done, we need to do it, we should hear more about the positive side of this, and others, they're saying enough already, it's always been a small school, we should close it down and send the kids out.
Well, I, I, honestly, I sit on the fence of that. I grew up here, my mother grew up here, my grandfather grew up here, so I've had family in school for ninety years, it's, it means something, but what does it mean to the community and what? And it's not just about me or what I want or what he wants, it's about a thousand residents or more that are voting, if we're lucky.
The, the most recent survey specific to the school was at the last national election, and there was, it was, I think it was eighty-three or ninety percent of the folks wanted the school here, and they wanted the school on the Hill as part of the, the solution. So we're, we're working with that, but as, we're, we're a school board, we start with the building, and if the community doesn't support it, we go to Plan B, and Plan C, and Plan D, and we go by what the voters decide every March. And so this is where we're starting, and trying to do our best with the responsibility and be judicious, so. Let's keep the, my last comment, if you wanna, go ahead.
All right.
You, you wanna make a comment, go ahead, I didn't mean to cut you off.
I just wanna piggyback a little bit on the opposite end of the side of it. I'm in there with thirty years ago, like, people have been moving here for thirty years for the school system. This school system has an incredibly positive image and reputation in this state, in this region. And if we're able to upgrade our school, bring in the compliance, add a few twenty-first century ideas to it, we're gonna attract the middle class, we're gonna attract more housing, we're gonna attract more taxpayers. That's why I came here, that's why you came here, and that's why lots of people I know come here. And if we don't, if we end up losing our school, you know, it, it's gonna become a vacation we saw, not a community. So I'm, this, I'm concerned about the price tag on it, but I, I try to look at the next fifteen, twenty years, not the next fifteen months. And so, you're gonna have this open house, I hope you're gonna publicize it more than on a, you know, a board on the Sure Earn Gym, I hope you're gonna get it out to people and make them wanna be there. I mean, we get more people at the Chowder Fest, you know? And that's the environment we've gotta create, get people, because there's a lot of talk in the town, most of it misinformed about what's positive or what's negative. And your job is to lay out the facts, so you need to get the people there.
Yeah, I appreciate the question. Yeah, the, the community is to have, the thriving schools are the ones they're gonna win for drawing, taxpayers, home sales, all of those things. So December sixth, I hope I've stirred the pot enough by breaking protocol with the meeting, whichever way you feel, you're a taxpayer, we respect it, the more engaged folks are based on fact and optimism, the better. So I wanna keep, keep us, get us back into a functioning meeting. Go ahead.
I just wanna echo something Jesse said earlier, this meeting is probably the easiest part of our, our job. These two guys have been working on this extremely hard since midsummer, at least, and we should just be really thankful, because they're not only doing a ton of due diligence, but they're making sure that as we move closer to when this all has to be decided, the taxpayers and the school community and the community at large has as much information as possible. So thank you guys for all you're doing, and regardless of what your take is on this, support these guys, they're doing their job, they're putting in a ton of hours, and we appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks, appreciate it. All right, we're gonna keep, we're gonna corral this back to the last couple steps in our responsibilities. So for manifesto, next. So I can take a motion for all in one shot, if somebody wants to do that.
To approve manifest A P, manifest, two thousand nineteen dash oh seven, hundred twenty-five thousand, seven hundred forty-four dollars and fourteen cents, two thousand nineteen dash oh eight, hundred fifty-six thousand, nine hundred four dollars, seventy-four cents, two thousand nineteen dash oh seven, two hundred thirty-one thousand, three hundred sixty-four dollars, twenty-four cents, and two thousand nineteen dash oh eight, four hundred thirty-one thousand, four hundred seventy-three dollars and three cents.
Motion ahead, with enthusiasm and speed. Second?
I'll make a second.
Second one, Jan? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
I missed discussion. Any discussion? So that, so that the public understands how this works, so when we go down to sign the man, manifesto, we go down to the SAU, we sit down at the table, and we flip through the pages, and read everything, we ask questions, it's not something that you necessarily get to see us do in this kind of a meeting, but there is a forum, we go down on our own, and the staff is flexible to our work schedules. But we sit down, we read through each one, so we know what every single line item is and what it costs before we sign it. So where there's not a depth of discussion here, we don't want you to think we're making light of this as part of the process, because we've read every single line item the district is spending, and we ask, just so people understand the background on how this works. So all in favor? Have we already do that? I'm starting to flow.
I, I made the second.
Okay, all in favor is aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous, thank you for approving the manifesto. Public forum, same thing, fifteen minutes, three minutes to go, no microphone for Jan, and we're starting, your three minutes, go.
I've asked this question before, and, and I'm hoping that I will be able to get an answer. Are you going to hire a professional negotiator in negotiating this next contract, a negotiator that will represent the taxpayers? I don't think that anybody on the board, I know I, when I was on the board, I knew I didn't have the skills to be a negotiator, and I think it's, it's fair, and it's something that you should do to represent the, to have the taxpayer represented in that very important negotiation.
Okay, thank you, Jan. Other comments from the public? Other comments from the public? Okay, seeing none. We'll close public forum, and item agendas for, agenda items for next meeting, so the update on negotiations process, the subcommittee, I'm trying to think, we're caught up on policy now.
We may, I'm gonna talk to this fellow, trying to get a quick policy with you meeting in.
Okay, so let's just, let's get that on the docket, so we have room for it, the agenda, those are the, those are the main things, and then looking out towards what, just laying out for the community what the next steps are after the December meeting, because we start to go in January, the subcommittee, Jim and I need to present to the board. So, Jan, December meeting will probably not be any longer than this kind of meeting, or as action-packed, but it gets really interesting in January, because we need to present proposal and get into the weeds on that to the whole board. So if you don't make it in December meeting, it'll, you're missing something similar to this, but we'd love to see lots of seats fall in the January, February, and March meetings, as things lead up to Election Day. But I don't, I didn't have, just, you know, the, the updates from farther in the school year, there's gonna be more school updates. That's that?
I'll find it, I'll find it.
Yeah, that was, that was excellent, you did a really good job today. I'm not sure how many people understand what a critical role O T plays in a school, and how different kids are coming in, and so you did a really nice job, I think, you'll probably get a lot of questions from folks after, that was really helpful. It's one of the insights into how education looks different, and that the students look different, and they have to be managed and helped. So I think those are the things I had, do you, anything?
I'm sure this will be the one.
Okay. There was no request to go into non-public, so we are gonna adjourn our meeting at seven thirty, November seventh. Thanks to everybody for making time and being here.